Meeting to order at six o'clock. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Polly. Trustee Lapham.
Here.
Clerk Flavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Crow.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Here.
They're motioning to add the agenda.
I'm adding something to it.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Do you have an addition there?
We do have some additions.
Oh. I can do it. Um, we're gonna end number eleven, Fire Department, wind your police equipment invoice. And number twelve is board review appointments.
A board review.
I'll make the motion to. Oh, who made it?
I'm in favor of updating the agenda with the two new items added. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was the same. Uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody online just public comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience with public comment? If so, please approach the podium. Seeing none. Opportunity for public comment is closed at this time. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Yeah, I have one question before, uh, I'll then I'll say okay to the consent agenda. I noticed on the department reports that the all of the people that we've requested in the past submit.
Except for the supervisor, yeah. I dropped the ball and forgot. I would include it, uh, I'll include Januaries with February's and March.
Okay. Now move to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Support.
I have a comment as in this discussion.
Yes, go for it.
Um, I would like to start seeing a monthly report from the assessor's office as well. We get all the other departments submit a monthly report and I'd like to start getting a report from the assessor.
I will note of that. Is there any other discussion?
What would you expect to see in that?
I'd like to know how much has been done. It was twenty percent a year. It's supposed to be done over the next five years. Where are we at into that twenty percent of this year? Are there any problems? Are there any issues or anything that should be brought to our attention? I think should be, every, but every other department in this township has to give a report.
Think you're ready.
Have me?
Yeah, I think you're ready.
Thank you. I didn't hear that. I was really very loud. Thank you.
Is there any other?
That's interesting.
Roll call please.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
You do not have any old business and move on to new business?
I think the only old business that we had, and I noticed it in the minutes from, uh, last regular board meeting, was that we were gonna start the process of opening a Facebook page and I, and I went on Facebook and I didn't see anything started.
It hasn't been.
Okay.
Like make public.
Okay.
We add, I wanna add some content to it before we.
Okay.
Are we?
When do we anticipate that to kind of start to be, how much time do you think?
Well, yeah, start it tomorrow.
I was just curious if you thought within a month.
As much fight as everybody put up about it, I mean, I can start it right now. Fine. Okay. Yeah, no, um, when you guys want, wanna, do you want me to start this week to even let us start for March?
Is, is there any way that we as a board can see it first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That might be, uh, what is that? Just a sort of a?
I think I can invite.
Or something like that.
Yeah, I could invite. Let me, before I say, yeah, absolutely, let me.
Yeah.
That I for sure can do that, but I think I can invite, um, initially people through before.
Well, if the board.
Just one question.
Yeah.
Did, when we talked about this, I think we were talking about it being informative only.
Yeah, and so we have a policy in place which we do not yet have, um, different than what our regular social media policy is right now. We talked about not having comments at first. Moving on to new business, the first item is budget adjustments.
I guess if anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
On budget.
Was the salary payable, why that we just didn't budget enough in that one?
What are you talking about? We took money out of salary payable for, um, that's elections.
Or, oh, there's extra money in that to cover these other expenses. I'll make a motion. We approve the budget adjustments as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
I can query unanimously. I don't remember too, the resolution to change precinct boundaries.
Um, the election commission already met regarding this. Um, they changed the election law where before you can only have two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine voters in a precinct. They've opted to four thousand nine hundred ninety. So we are combining precincts four and five that all vote at TriPoint Church and have the same county commissioner. So our voters won't see any change except they will only have one line when they go to vote and it'll be less confusion for them. Um, it will save us for costs when we have to buy new equipment, which is coming up soon, and also less workers for an election.
Sounds like a win-win.
Yes.
I make the motion.
I'll support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
I can query unanimously.
I'll, I'll do that resolution.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Um, item number three, the introduction of proposed ordinance number one fifty-six, a sanitary sewer and water ordinance amendment. You wanna?
Yeah, I can talk about that. Uh, just, uh, one amendment to the current water and sewer uh, ordinance, section nineteen point two, uh, to still solve the quarterly readings, but now monthly billings. The new wording would be all water meters shall be read quarterly and water and sewage billings shall be rendered monthly and shall become due and payable on or before the fifteenth of the month. Uh, and this would be, uh, the time to introduce, uh, this proposed amendment and then I would publish a notice of the introduction and next month it would be considered for the board for adoption. And then upon publication, it would take effect.
There's no public hearing in there, then?
No.
You're, you're just looking for a motion right now then?
Motion to introduce, uh, proposed ordinance number one fifty-six.
I'll make a motion to uh, introduce ordinance number one fifty-six, sanitary sewer and water ordinance amendment.
I'll support.
Any discussion?
So just for clarification, we're going to continue to read the meters quarterly, but we will start billing.
Is there any questions about that? I know I've talked a lot of that.
No, it's just a matter of postage check was the question, but we've talked about that.
I think we did, our budget, we adjusted our budget to show when I see some postage. Any other discussion, questions?
This would be a great one, once the Facebook page is up and running to encourage people to consider automatic fund transfers, uh, to it.
Yeah, the form.
Payments automatically and save us some postage too.
Facebook for the win.
And there you go.
Any other comments or discussions? Name none, um, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
Um, moving on to number four for policies and procedures, a paid-on-call pay policy.
Um, since I'm the chair of policies and procedures, I'll just introduce these, but I don't think she wants to come up and answer any questions anybody has, but um, the fire department's paid-on-call pay policy procedure. Um, discussion began in September two thousand twenty-four after extended conversations and meetings that went on for months, and this is the final paid-on-call pop, paid-on-call pay policy. And then the chief, um, will assign it a policy number after the policy and procedure manual has been adopted at a later date.
Yes.
But the, the policy would be adapted now, but he'll assign it a number later.
Correct. Doing a complete review of the, uh, department procedures.
Any questions?
No, I understand. But no, do you, do you want me to do something from the committee? I just, no.
No, I just didn't know. I just didn't know if anybody had any questions. If they did, about the policy, you can ask the chief and otherwise somebody can have the motion that go out.
We had discussed this also at the fire committee meeting, uh, not, not the depth of the change, but, uh, under the, uh, pay section of it and that, and there was gonna be some discussion, um, as you may recall, there was some concern about, uh, multiple calls. Has that been addressed?
Yes, it has been addressed in that, and it was stated of what, um, we came to conclusion at the fire committee meeting of continuing that process.
Okay, and the, and the, uh, paid-on-call are satisfied with, uh, discussion?
Okay, good. Yes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the, um, okay, but I'm sorry.
One question. Um, is this a policy and procedure of the fire department or of the township? Where's it at? What, who's booker?
This is a, a policy of the department, but then it goes along with the township.
Okay, so it goes in our policy and procedure manual? Ye- yes, I think it would, and it came through our committee. It's a recommendation from our committee through the board. So basically, that's the motion.
Great.
Hey, that's what just, well, no.
I'll make a motion. We approve the paid-on-call pay policy as presented.
Well, support.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
Um, next is a utility billing utilities payment policy. Regional manager of F and B Catherine Nguyen provided the utilities payment policy for our consideration in early January. Um, I'll make a motion. We approve the utility billing payment policy as presented unless Attorney Baldwin have any suggestions.
Just, uh, just one, uh, point, one thing I would in section one F, there's a reference to quarterly billing.
Okay.
I think we're headed toward monthly billing for that, so with that change, or, um, bye.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Good eye.
So I made that motion.
Did you make motion for this?
I did when I was talking.
I will, um, support.
Good eye, Tim.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, any other discussions? Roll call please.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
Okay, next is the anti-discrimination and harassment policy. Um, it came to the personnel committee's attention that a current anti-harassment policy is not adequate and the anti-discrimination and harassment policy has been provided to us by the township's labor attorneys. And clerk Flavich.
Yeah, there was an issue that happened in December that we had to investigate and our legal team told us that we needed to improve our harassment and anti-discrimination policy, and this is what they recommended we approve. So it came from Chad and Lizzie. So I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
Support.
Any other discussion?
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Uh, yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
Okay, next is, um, cabinets for the treasurer's office. Um, about two years ago, the clerk's office received new cabinets in their office when the remodeling was done in there, and then we updated the building um, departments, added a cabinet as well in there and added a window. And, um, the treasurer's office was also kind of talked about at that time, but nothing ever went anywhere. It kind of got dropped. So bringing it back up to light and um, we, I received two quotes, one from, um, McDonald's Cabinetry and the other one from Alpina Supply, who also works with Aspen House as a contractor. Um, so anyway, um, this will go in the current of, under the current existing counter and it's needed to support the counter because the counter is actually separating from the wall because of weight and leaning and it's not very secure on there and, um, um, we will also have the, a printer located underneath that counter, so we don't have to keep turning around and running into each other and then the printer will be right under there and we'll also use it for storage. Um, I would recommend going with the low bidder, Aspen House, through Alpina Supply and the amount of three thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents out of building improvements GL one oh one two six five nine three zero zero one zero.
Is that building number one?
Yes.
And that line is funded to that level, I think.
Yes, we just started it up.
So. I'll make that moment.
I'll say.
Any other discussion?
I saw somewhere in here that there was additional costs. I see that. Maybe it sounds something else. Just bear with me for one sec. I thought I saw like a little sub-note that said, uh.
It might have been ten ten that you're thinking about, maybe.
Oh, yeah, I saw that last time, but.
Okay.
Oh, wait a second. No, you're, you're right. That's, uh, that is exactly where I saw it. Thank you.
You're welcome. We just found it today.
Come on, Anna.
They're all about your show.
Is there any other?
These two are identical to one another with the exception of the cost? Or did who?
They're, they're about four hundred.
They both came here and looked at it and we told them what we wanted is, so the whole length of the, of the counter will have cabinets kind of from the outside coming in with a space in the middle where our cash drawers are and underneath that will be a, um, a slide-out kind of a drawer, like on wheels or a cabinet with wheels.
Printout shows.
To put the, um, to put the printer on.
Right. So McDonald's
Was it six?
Basically was the same thing?
Uh, yes, and their price was four thousand four eighty-six fifty-four.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying to go with, uh, um, lower bid and I believe Aspen House has a good reputation too. Well, obviously Alpina Supply does too.
I know where to find it.
And did I say the?
Three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents out of that GL, yes.
Yeah, there's a motion.
So on the agenda, there's, there's so that, you're gonna have this in two motions and I take it, right?
No.
He, he's talking about ten ten too.
Oh, we're not. I'm talking about item number eight.
That's a totally different, this is separate item.
That's, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet, okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Motion we support it. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, any other discussion about the cabinets? Roll call please.
Treasurer, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Supervisor Kujabaski.
Um, next item number eight is a room divider for the treasurer's office um, in the amount of six hundred ninety-nine dollars to be paid for out of GL one oh one two five three nine seven five zero zero zero, equipment and furniture. I have been wanting my own office since I started here over eight years ago, and this is probably gonna be the next best thing. Over the years, we've talked about me possibly moving into the assessor's office and giving me part of that office. We talked about building a wall. We've talked about many, many different ways to at, at least give me a little bit of privacy in my own space. So this is, um, I guess the next best thing is what I can get. I'd love to have something where it's totally quiet and um, that goes up to the ceiling and locks me in a little box, but that's really not feasible. Um, so this I will be happy with this. And I'll make a motion that we purchase this on my office for me.
Is this a fixed or movable?
It's movable. There's a picture.
Back it down.
There's. So it can be moved. If anything ever changed, your offices, it could be moved.
How much more would you need to just back you in?
We talked about it.
We did get a quote one time. It was like three thousand dollars because you'd have to put electrical and all.
You have to put a whole door in.
Yeah.
I was just thinking about if we all checked in.
Oh.
We can all check in. Well, it's just the price difference is a pretty substantial person. Yeah, I know, but I love that, but.
During COVID that we got the quote, so I'm sure it's even more now.
Are, are those, are there? What's dividing you right now? Isn't there a files?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Uh, we used to have, um, or my desk, but you know, I'm sitting at my desk. Here's the end of my desk. We used to have Rhonda's desk budded up to mine, which was on her side, was shelving and a desk, like she could be at that desk.
I guess I was just picturing some file drawers or something, so obviously not.
Well, but now we've moved her down to the window since Kelly's gone and we have a a little desk in between us, but it's wide open and it just would be nice to have a little bit of space.
And sounds echo.
I think echo big time.
Yeah, the only question I hear is, is it got a visual panel?
There is, see, like through here, it's kind of shadowed a little tiny bit.
All right.
Where it's not totally clear.
You will have a view of the office and my desk.
Plus I got cameras. My camera shows the front and it shows the building. So I have that plus this, I can see through some light. So.
I'll support that.
Thank you.
Any other, um, discussion regarding the treasurer's office room divider? Roll call please.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lapham.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Kujabaski.
Yes.
Okay, now the one Steve's asking about is so ever since I started here there has been a mess in the, in, it begins up in my office. A massive wires. See how those are all over on the floor over there behind you? See all them over there? It's worse, way worse than that. They're all clumped together and we have talked about doing this for a long time. Um, but we gotta, it's like finally we're gonna get a quote. Aaron from ten ten was supposed to get us a quote for years and years and finally I'm like, okay, we're gonna get a price on this and see how much it would cost to straighten out all those network wires and there's many of them. They would go through the ceiling, through, um, the old assessing office and all the way back to the server room. And straighten them up, clean them up, um.
Get them off.
Get them off the floor. Um, it would, I mean, for safety sake and everything else. I mean, um, when Rhonda used to sit at her desk when it was in the other spot, if she would just roll back because there's these, I don't know, it's part of a computer for all these network lines and there are a bunch of things are plugged into it and if she hit that, it would knock something out. And that's not good. So anyway, this is just to fix that problem that's been there for years and we have to do, make these little fixable things around here is when we can, a little at a time.
Have room for expansion or is it?
Would be the server ended.
What do you, it, it goes from there to the.
So it'll cover all the current lines and.
Yeah, they would stretch everything or do whatever they want.
Everything.
Yeah, through the ceiling and that's why um, Omega is going to do that part, but then we need ten ten to do it because then he needs to go in and with the hardware and connect the network switches to wherever they have to go in the server room.
These have two bits for the same thing.
No, they're together. So I think one of Steve's questions was, is Omega is to do that labor part and materials, what they need. Ten ten will hook up the hardware to the network wires. The only thing we don't have an exact quote on is the labor from ten ten. And they base their stuff on a basically ninety-five dollars an hour and on the high side, eight hours. Um, which is on, probably on the high side for, for them. So, um, Michelle and I talked about it. We kind of guessed if it took them up to eight hours to do it along with these two quotes, we would talk about going up to eight thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for the project.
So that's, so the fourteen hundred from one thousand is only for
Only.
Piece of hardware.
Correct. It's for the hardware and well, it says new forty-eight port gigabit. I don't know, maybe it's supposed to be byte, but managed network switch. Well, that includes that. But it doesn't include the.
So that's a piece of hardware to the system.
Yes.
Then enhance speed or is it?
I love it enhances speed, but it cleans up a mess.
Just like you see in a server where it's power over ethernet, so it's basically a switch relay and then. Cause they're going to be, is it gonna be like a big piece of conduit that, that all the cables, that all that cat wire runs through?
Um, well, if we read what, I don't know that for sure, but, um.
I can't tell.
Omega says to install sixteen dedicated CAT six data slash network lines in printer room and clerk's office, wiring will be, will run concealed where possible and surface mounted raceway where concealment is impractical. Ten ten to to terminate rack and wiring. Omega will terminate and test a wall at wall locations.
Is the computer room a pretty permanent place? Not likely to move?
No, it's locked, it's a locked room in the back.
And they're gonna run? I wonder if there's any firewalls. Anyway, do you know if there's any firewalls, chief?
I think, I thought of that space in between our offices and F and B's area, it was a firewall at one point, but I know that they've been in my office doing stuff in the ceiling and there.
They gotta drill through a firewall somewhere.
And they were here. Omega came here with ten ten and they looked at everything. So they, no, but they were physically here when they looked at it.
Wow, so it's, so roughly eighty-six, eighty-eight hundred dollars.
Right. But again, this is an old building and little by little, we have to plug away at making improvements wherever we can.
Yeah, I just wonder how many little things they run into along the way. We, you know, typically in construction, you sort of add ten percent.
I think Aaron's familiar with what's up in our ceilings. Ten ten is. I mean, they added all of this stuff in that thing over there for recording our meetings and our speakers and all that stuff.
Where would this come from?
Come out of Capitol, um, outlay. One oh one two six five nine seven one zero zero zero. I'll make the motion. We approve this in the amount of eight, up to eight thousand eight hundred and forty dollars out of one oh one two six five nine seven one zero zero zero.
And is Omega the only company that can do that?
They work with ten ten.
I just wondered, yeah.
Or any, probably any electrical. Or any, probably any electrical.
Ten ten suggested Omega and apparently they work together.
Six nine, you said, or two six five?
What's that? One oh one, two six five, nine seven one zero zero zero.
Nothing's been spent on that yet. Well, we, we budgeted quite a bit there. Why was that?
Well.
We've not used.
This is our current budget, they.
I know, isn't it in this fiscal year you're doing it?
Yeah, I can. Hopefully they can get it done.
It's a line item with seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted with nothing taken out. What were we planning on doing?
Um, some.
Was that the?
Garage doors and stuff like that.
Which we didn't do yet.
No, but I've been waiting for one quote to come in and. I can't get more than one quote, so.
Oh, I'm waiting for the second quote next to date for it.
And there's things even next year. That need. Things need to get done too, trying to wait for quotes for windows and.
Right.
We're just kind of sitting on that right now. We're just kind of sitting on that money right now, waiting for the answers to come above the windows, the HVAC, the doors.
You know, that's a big project.
I'll support. Your motion, Laura.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
No.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Kuzabowski.
No.
Yes.
Chief. I think you're up.
He should have, uh, information about a training request from firefighter Stackowitz. About attending a grant writing class. And at Delta College. March twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Um, this is a program. Presented by the First Responder Grants LLC, um, and is one of the only ones that will be in the state of Michigan. Uh, this year. Um, firefighter Stackowitz has been gracious enough. To, to volunteer his time and efforts in writing grants for the, um, department already. And this will only enhance his ability to, um, further hopefully write successful grants. For us to get further funding. Um, this is, um, a relatively, um. Cheap. Course comparatively from across the country, what others will run. And it does provide us with the, some opportunities after he's finished. Of getting, uh, further counseling from the organization, um, and being able to guide us in proper submission of grants. So the request is to, to send him to that class with the course fee of four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Uh, staying for, um, an overnight, two overnights. Um, a hundred and seventy dollars each with, uh, no tax on that. Um. The supplies is for mileage at the current IR IRS rate. And then others for meals. Uh, for a grand total of nine hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents. And, uh, there should be enough in the GL for training. And for travel.
You said two nights?
Yes.
So is it one seventy a night? So we gotta add a hundred and seventy.
Right, the math isn't right.
At this point, Bay Valley may be doing it for eighty-five. They were a nice place in the eighties.
I won't, you know, I was gonna say that too. Okay.
That might be a eighty-five and I, I would.
It could be for a rate like that. Hundred and seventy, I would think that might be a sweet, so.
So the worst case scenario would be a thousand eighty-eight.
Yes. I believe from what he put together, that most likely that was the number of a hundred and seventy for two months.
Good, um. I, I see it says. Next to mileage, it says backfill hours twenty-four. What's that mean?
So. For him to go, there would be a, um. It would be one of his duty days.
Okay.
So we'd have to. Uh, get overtime for that date.
Or whomever fills that.
Yes, for whoever covers.
Um, I just have a question. When you were presenting this, Chief, you said that he volunteers his time to do grants. You're talking about previous grants? I thought you did that while you were at work.
It's, he's done a lot of work outside of.
Typically, don't you do work on those when you're here on duty? I just wanted to make, cause I, I just didn't know if you totally volunteered your time for all the things. You did them while you were working and I'm sure you.
That's in addition.
I think what you're saying is that he's, he's volunteering his time to go to this class.
That, that and that he does do some extra outside of work hours time and that he's taking the time even during. Uh, his, um, normal work schedule. That he is doing time for that. So I consider that almost a volunteering aspect.
Okay.
Because he is al- also assigned to do other details as well.
I personally think this is great. I, the only question I have is about the prison, um. The entity providing it, the first responder grants LLC. Who are they, where they come from? Have they been around a while?
Yes, they, they are nationally known. Um, I did some research on them as well, um, and there's nothing in their website that says that they're, uh, this is not hokey.
Didn't do a Snoop, so.
Don't listen to those people.
I, I do think.
This is a nationally recognized program.
Okay, thanks Jim.
I was trying to get a, a free, um, one because I know a dean that works at, uh, Delta College. But because they're bringing them in, they don't get free spots, so.
So who's bringing in? Delta's.
Delta College is bringing in this, this, uh, organization, the, the, uh, first responder grants.
Uh, I'll make a. Like trustee Reiner, I think this is a great idea. I think we should. It's long overdue.
Yes.
I make a motion to, uh, to approve this, uh, training request. Um, as presented.
I'll support.
Do you wanna do it up to the one thousand eighty-eight?
Well, I mean, I think, I think we've. I doubt that it's a hundred and seventy bucks in.
You can go to Marriott for less than that.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so.
Especially.
If it happens, it happens, but I guess we should probably have a friendly amendment to, to go to a cap of. Uh, one thousand eighty-eight dollars.
Only for lodging.
Yeah, for lodging request reasons only.
Yeah.
I'm good with a friendly amendment.
Roll call. Any other discussion, I'm sorry? Roll call.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Kuzabowski, yes.
And I do have, um. The request of having that signed off, so we can go ahead and start making, uh, um. The arrangements for his enrollment and for lodging.
That's a bit insane, it's interesting.
Yep.
I'll say it.
When is this training happening?
Uh, March twenty.
So it's in this fiscal year.
Yes, it is in this.
Aw. Maybe Jim will share his room with her.
Yeah, it's just like. Thank you.
Oh, we have to remove the local tax out of here. I like to take a tax exempt form with you, cause every.
Yes.
Eighty-eight oh two, so really the amount's. One thousand four sixty-seven.
So when he. Got the quote, it was for no.
It says no tax.
It says local tax, ninety.
Are you on the best?
You've earned a coin.
Like Steve, I'm moving ahead.
I don't think you get out of local tax.
Pump the brakes, Laura.
You're good, Jim. Just take that nine tax exempt form with you. And these people, I'm calling them.
It's not safe with taxes.
Moving on to added item number eleven, the fire department light bar.
So you have, uh, invoice for fifteen fifty-five for a new light bar for the brush truck. Um, this is a programmable. Light bar that will provide not only the emergency response capabilities. Um, enhanced of what it already has, which is very limited. It's on the old basis of rotators and the new light bars are LED. It will also provide scene lighting once on scene. Uh, because there'll be two other lights involved in this and a complete rewiring of the brush truck. So, this came, um. This came up. At, at last minute. Um, the cost of this normally would be over three thousand dollars for the light bar. And we're getting it at a forty percent discount, cause we had to act immediately to be able to get that forty percent discount. You know, so, correct. They did have our tax exempt form, so they could make this possible. Yes.
Why do we, why are we getting a forty percent discount?
We got it at the right time and we knew the right people.
Is this a used or?
This is new.
Yeah.
No, it was, it just came out, the, 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 the person that, um, we were talking with about installing, um.
Yeah.
Dash cams. Had made contact with the vendor. And they said you could get this light bar at this time for this discounted price as it was already pre-sold. But then it was returned. Without ever leaving the shop, because the, the company that had originally ordered it never accepted the order of it.
So they had to sell it as used.
So they had to sell it as used as a restock.
Who's mounting this?
Uh, will be, um. And he has a, a company name, but it's the fire chief from Green Township. He had a, a company that does, uh, lighting. And, um, alarms, um, uh, police cars and fire trucks and that kind of field is own business doing that.
Is that in addition to this?
There will be once, he's gonna include this piece of the light bar in with the dash cams. At a very reasonable rate. And then we will have that bar that will continue to be our property. So we can change that out with anytime we change the vehicle.
Okay, and as Laura mentioned, the local tax, that's. That'll be reduced?
I don't know how they do that, but because they did have our tax exempt form.
Well, when we pay it, we'll only pay the fourteen sixty-seven and send a tax exempt form with the check.
Okay.
Okay.
They're, they're under zero.
Applies local taxing, but I don't know why there's a little tax on it.
I don't know.
Does this go on the brush truck? Is that what's going on?
Um. So I have some questions about that, just regarding the fact that this is brand new in the state of the brush truck and it's an older truck. I know that there is a light bar in the back room here. Um. What is the potential of putting that other light bar on the current brush truck and hanging onto this? Does it need to go on?
I wasn't aware that there was. Somebody had mentioned that there was, but I have not seen.
I, I'm just wondering, I did see it today, so I know it's back there, verified that. Um, I just was wondering. Because the brush truck is an older truck and. If this is a potentially three thousand dollar piece of equipment, then maybe we hang on to it in the box. Put the older used one.
Once we, if we can get this, of course, we can, and see what the capabilities are. Uh, the thing that sold me off of this is that it is programmable. So it can bring up scene lighting when we're on scene and not just strobes. So that is a, a key factor if we're out in the wilderness, so to speak, in the dark. Um, so we can definitely take that into consideration of, of if we were to get this and that. Of keeping one, uh, accessible to either sell or utilize on another vehicle of some way, shape or form.
Seems it makes sense to put this one on that brush truck, like you said, if you're out and you're in a field or the woods and it has that. Where it shows shines more light, that you'd want that light on that brush.
You just have to see what the differences are of the two.
I, I'm under the impression of the, um, light bar that is currently in the back room is the same as the one that is on. Chief's truck, I believe.
Okay.
Um. Which we were gifted from the fire department.
Okay.
Um. And I believe the time Waterston already evaluated it, took the blue lights out of it, so it should just be red and white, but. I've not seen it in action, so I don't know, but my, like I said, my concern is just putting a brand new piece of equipment on a paper truck that. The brush truck.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, definitely would not want to have any damage done, but at this price, it's something that you could not.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that.
This is low, low.
Low profile. Mm-hmm. Yeah, more, most anything that you're gonna get is a low profile type mount.
I'll make a motion, we approve this light bar in the amount of one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Any other discussion?
I, I would just say this supervisor, you helped the chief make the decision on which light bar goes on that truck.
I think, I think, I think probably the firefighters have a better, uh. Idea of what that looks like in the woods than I do, but I'd be happy to look at it upon arrival.
It sounds like the. Be scene lighting is a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't it currently have some sort of floodlights to illuminate the area currently?
They're very small and don't provide a lot of.
Okay.
Uh, any other discussion?
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yeah.
Supervisor Kuzabowski.
Yes. Last item on the agenda is the appointment, um, of board of review members. Uh, we have, board of review consists of three members. They are two-year terms. Um. In the beginning of February, one of the members stepped down. Um, so we will be reappointing Steve Dean and Kathy Mischinsky. And I'm also looking for the board to approve appointing Chad Ash as the third member of that board. I've already spoken to Chad, um, he's agreed to do it. And the term would start now and end on twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
I'll make that motion. You'll appoint those.
I support.
Is there any discussion?
When do the other two terms end?
They all end at twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
Staggered?
No, not board of review.
Oh. Okay. So is it typical that they just keep getting renewed?
Um, they can. I did have a discussion with them in. December, when I first started, my first interaction with the board of review, and at that time they were all interested in continuing. Um. But just before the training, they're required to do training every two years, certification training. Uh, just before that training. One of the members decided he did not want to.
Continue.
So. And the other two members, I believe, were up to date in their training, so they weren't required. I attended that training, it was one of the counties put on here. Um.
So would it be a good idea to, to stagger these for future or?
Can we?
I'm not sure if it can.
That's what I wondered about you. It just makes it. Makes it easier.
I thought they did it this way because of the training schedule.
Yeah, because they have, that makes sense.
I think Steve, well, he's. He's chair of the board of appeals as well.
He'd be his chair of the board of review though.
There's only board of appeals. And, and, uh. Which. I think I still said that. We don't have any meetings. He's excellent. I like.
Can you give me the big box for sitting on that one?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Um, I will look into though and see if it can be staggered, but I think it's just for ease of training.
That does make sense.
To make sure that.
Then you're good for two years.
Yeah. Yes, because I know that the assessing office does recommend them to attend the training every year, just to make sure that they don't lapse. attend the training every year, just to make sure that they don't lapse. Okay, any other discussion?
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trusty Carl.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Polly.
Yes.
Trusty Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yes.
Second opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody online with public comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience to public comment? Closing public comment for the second opportunity. Is there any other discussion amongst the board?
Oh, surely you have something to say, Cash.
Beautiful day out.
Somebody's may look at you first.
Their motion.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Or
I'll in favor returning. It was the same, meeting adjourned at six fifty one.